Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting in order to order tonight, Monday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P. M. We have recognition tonight, proclamation of gratitude. Buchanan Fine Arts Council Chair Kelly Carlin and Dr. Pat Moore would like to present a proclamation to the DPW tonight.
And we are not seeing this evening, so I'm gonna fill in for the for the ladies this evening. This came out of Dr. Moore came and saw me on another matter a few weeks ago. Had expressed some gratitude for the work Public Works Department did when there was a water main busted right before one of their shows one night and they were out there working in the pouring rain at seven o'clock. And she asked if they could put together a proclamation for presentation. So I'm about to read the presentation that they put together for this evening. Proclamation of gratitude from Buchanan Fine Arts Council to the Buchanan Department of Public Works. Whereas the Buchanan Fine Arts Council recognizes the essential unwavering service of the Buchanan Department of Public Works in preserving safety, well-being, and cultural heritage to our community. And whereas during the recent emergency, the impact of the ten shop theater, the Department of Public Works responded with extraordinary speed, professionalism, and care, providing critical assistance to protect both public infrastructure and invaluable assets of our theater. And whereas the employees of the Department of Public Works demonstrate exceptional dedication by working long hours to ensure that facilities were preserved from potential damage. And whereas the selfless contributions exemplify the spirit in public service and reinforce the vital role of interdepartmental cooperation in times of crisis. Now therefore be it resolved that Buchanan Fine Arts Council, on behalf of its members, artists, and the wider creative community, extends its deepest appreciation and heartfelt thanks to the Buchanan Department of Public Works. And be it further resolved that this proclamation serves as permanent testament to the department's outstanding service and it be entered into public record with great honor and sincere gratitude, proclaimed this fourteenth day of July twenty twenty-five by the Buchanan Fine Arts Council. Like, congratulations.
All right. Thank you to Mike and his team for all their hard work. If everybody could please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have somebody to lead us on the indication tonight?
Yeah.
Join with with us as we pray together. Father in heaven, we thank you so much for bringing each one of us out here tonight. And Father, we thank you so much for the wisdom that we're asking for from these commissioners tonight, that they will dispense the justice that needs to take place, oh Father. And Father, we pray for our unity within our city, that you will guide us to the things that need to be done. We pray all this in Jesus's wonderful name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Weeden, Swem.
Present.
George.
Here.
Money.
Present.
And Bianski.
Yep.
You have a form.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swem.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
And Bianski.
Yep.
Okay. Now it's time for a public comment, agenda items only. There's a three-minute limit. Please step up to the podium if you have any comments. Seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swem.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
And Bianski.
Uh-huh.
Okay. No scheduled matters matters from the floor tonight. Do we have any reports from departments who'd like to go over tonight?
The ones under your packet. If you have any specific questions on any of those, we'd be happy to answer them now. Call Department heads here available.
Do we have any questions?
No.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. Awarding of the pot holding contract. Consider awarding the pot holding contract.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We just received bids on our TMF grant for pot holding. As you know, this is required from our investigation work. We received a grant from the state of Michigan who will pay for all this work. The bids came in at five hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars. However, we have four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of grant money available for this work. What we're asking tonight is to award the contract as bid, with the understanding that immediately we're gonna change our into a four hundred twenty-five thousand dollar contract to align with the money we have available. The way we bid this work, it's all unit costs. We just adjust the number of units to the contract amount we have available. And so we're doing all the internal investigations, the city staff. This is actually the pot holding at the at the at the shut-off meter at the pit and at the main to see what the materials are there.
Do you mind going over or just putting the four bids out there for the for the public?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great one. We received four bids, as I said, ranging in cost from nine five hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars from Plumbers Environmental, six hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars from Five Star Energy Services, six hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars from Duke's Roof Control, and seven hundred nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars from Avalanche.
Thank you.
This is our largest part of it.
All right. I'll take a motion for approval.
This is Money. I'd move to approve awarding the contract to Plumbers Environmental in the full bid amount of five hundred ninety-two dollars, five thousand ninety-two, four hundred ninety-six dollars, with manager McGee to execute a change order to adjust the project scope and total contract value not to exceed four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as presented.
Just a point of clarity, five hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars.
I have a second then, a bridge. But I do have another question.
Go forward, Dan.
I kind of understood, but I didn't understand. Are we gonna give them five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars? We're gonna give them five four hundred twenty-two. But we have to approve a five hundred ninety-two?
We have to approve this bid per the requirements of the grant and then adjust down for our our change work.
All right. So I'll second.
Mr. McGee, just to make it clear, because I know that some people are, I've seen some posts about how we go with the lowest bid, and I know that that's not accurate, but this is a very replicable.
Very much so. Plumbers Environmental Service has been doing this work for longer than I've been doing this work. So for twenty years, I've worked with them on projects all over West Michigan. They're a very good firm.
Yes. Just wanna make sure. I read that, but.
You're good.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
And Swem.
Yes. All right. Next on the list, request for acquisition of tax foreclosed property.
Yes, and I apologize. I had a memo inside my packet that should have you should have received it on this. There are two tax foreclosed properties coming up at five oh three Arctic Street and four twenty Elizabeth Streets. We can buy both these properties for less than two thousand dollars from the tax foreclosure folks. We have another eleven properties already under control in the area. With these two properties, we'll have a package of thirteen properties to offer up this fall to developers and builders interested in constructing homes in this neighborhood. So to be able to get a package of thirteen properties together for development is pretty good. To be able to get these lots. So if we don't buy these lots, they go to tax sale. They go to tax sale, so we can buy them and set up for ten years. Let us buy them. We can force them back into the market quicker working with developers.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to move to approve the purchase of five oh three Arctic and four twenty Elizabeth as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Give it to George on that one.
I do have a question though. I want to clarify this.
Floor is yours.
We have a record of accumulating this stuff. And I have had this discussion, but I want to be on record that we've had this discussion. Baconed property takes a long time to get rid of. And there's been the lease to own, you know, how do you RFP. But we're not gonna be in MLS. There hasn't been any nibbles on the properties on our webpage. Are we gonna actually be able to get rid of these? Are you going to? Have you got some insight that?
I'm comfortable we are. We actually have had some inquiries on some of our lots. We have in the same area already. We'll also put the other formal marketing package. So with this, we'll put these together and actually start aggressively marketing them out to builders and developers, as I said. Beyond that, though, we'll also do is we'll put clawbacks on there. So that if somebody acquires one, they have to start their building by a certain date. They have to get occupancy by a certain date to to avoid exactly the same as keeping them sitting there. We'll put some things on there to ensure that development processes happens.
And do you have experience in how to keep that kind of control? Because once you sign the deed over possessions nine nine, okay.
Fortunately, working with a lot of municipalities, I have over here is clawbacks or something using regularly to ensure that a developer doesn't pick up something and just sit on it.
All right. Thank you.
Larry, did you have some comment?
No. I think Dan pretty much covered what I was gonna ask, so yeah.
Mr. George.
No. Feel comfortable with this.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Money.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Okay. Item C, traffic control order number two five eight. Consider TCO number two five eight to prohibit on-street parking on Theoda Court, Charles Court, for the duration of construction project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This is a temporary traffic control order. We're looking to put in place with the detours going on around town right now. We are seeing pretty heavy traffic, because everybody locally knows this is the easy cut through around the official detour. That street is incredibly narrow. If you go through there, already about half that street has no parking as it was coming around that curve because it's so tight. We're just for the duration of construction, asking to expand it along the length of both those streets in in both directions with the idea for safety reasons. Right now, when people coming through there, you can barely get two cars if two cars through there. You throw somebody parking on street, if you want an emergency vehicle to try to get through there, it barely functions when we don't have all that traffic on there because of the narrow width with all that traffic on there. It's really just a public safety issue at this standpoint is why we're asking for this temporary traffic control order.
And I know I talked to Harvey a couple different occasions about up on Cecil Street and areas like that, because there are people who park in the street there. And temporarily, if we could if we could keep those vehicles off the streets, because those are those are other ones that are.
We can track. Those streets are more wider.
They're a little wider, yeah, but I mean.
Mercy vehicles, especially fire trucks. This one is just more, this is just temporary, just because of.
Oh, yeah.
Respectfully, ma'am, comments are at the beginning of the.
Well, we're from that Theoda Court.
Oh, yes, ma'am. If I may, sir.
Go ahead.
A couple of things, you know, this is not the first thing we've done to try to address this. We've also put up detour signs and road closed signs trying to discourage traffic, as well as chief fund heavier patrols through their ass of late trying to. We've tried everything. This is the next move to keep safety to that area.
How many tickets have actually been issued? Because there's a whole load of no parking signs on that road already. And I I I just don't want to make a rule that we're not gonna enforce, you know? And me personally, if there's more vehicles parked on there. I mean, I drove up and down it several times, but I drove up and down it more this last weekend. And I just have a tough time putting up, you know, making work for ourselves, when we're not enforcing the rules that we've already got. And I mean, there's a whole line of no parking on one side already. So I mean, I mean, how many, if we handed out any tickets? I talked to you about it. I mean, I talk to this gentleman a lot. We all do. But I'm not doing this publicly because I want to know. I don't want to pass something that we're not gonna hand out tickets, because we put up a bunch of no parking signs down by the ballpark, and they still park down there. So that's my whole point.
And it is very, it's a tough situation. There is no good solution. The reality is that's the road that's built standard you've never built a road to today. So just the extra traffic's worse. Chief, I can let you talk to the enforcement, stuff you guys have been doing and how you've managed that.
Right. Right now, as far as parking, get their cars parked, they will, but usually it's overnight parking. For the no parking stuff, but for now, because my controls are hitting other complaints, they can't just, you know, separate to just force traffic to sit there. So they are going to different places.
Right. But I would I would like to make a point of order. I think we need to, I think we need to move on this and then have the discussion phase, because, you know, we're already in the discussion and we haven't even moved on this motion. So I'll I'll move to approve traffic control order number two fifty-eight as presented.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Money on the point of order.
Yeah.
I mean.
Now we can go into our discussion a little bit more.
So I I travel up and down that road all the time, and it is already very difficult as it is when people are parking on the street. And oftentimes, they are, to Dan's point, they are parking in the no parking areas as it is. I was on my way here today, had someone almost take me out. We all saw each other coming, but it was, it's already tightened up, so.
I will make sure the police department makes a commitment to have enforcement through their no parking. If we're not gonna do this, if we're not gonna enforce it.
Yep, that's fair.
And apparently, we we do have citizens that are living there that are here for that particular reason. So, you know, it's probably gonna be up to you to make sure that some of that stuff is done, Harvey.
And this is just temporary.
Yeah, oh, yeah. It's it's temporary.
How temporary?
And we should see, we're expecting Red Bud to open before Labor Day at this point. We'll see some traffic.
November fifth, this went all downtown in this whole field.
This is just, just out, this is just for that area of North Oak and Front Street. That should be coming up if it does, it may, what, soon in October or something like that.
Oak and Front.
Just for that area, because of the pressure it's putting there.
Yeah.
And and we'll make a commitment that all city staff, whoever's driving by there, we see something, we'll club, police department, no parking there to make sure it's enforced.
Any further discussion?
I just have a tough time with no enforcement. I really do. I mean, I think if there would have been a couple of tickets handed out, this might have been alleviated to a degree without the action that we're taking now. But that's just my personal opinion.
And Dan, to just reiterate, many people do park legally. It's just where that is at that causes an issue.
There's no parking signs all along there, Harvey.
Yes, on the other side, it's not where people are parking at. Where they're parking at is legally where they can park.
Okay.
So we're not gonna issue tickets to people where they can park.
I mean, and I, I think one other thing that's just coming to mind on this, you know, in this temporary phase, I would hope we're not going to issue tickets if someone needs to park in their front yard to alleviate on-street in that situation, so. All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Bianski. What?
No.
Sorry. Swem.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
And Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to expenditures. Consider approving expenditures for July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead. No. Again, just apologize to you guys. A couple days later, we never like to get it to you, but this is a day when we're switching accounts in our backend accounting system. So we'll be back on our normal schedule come next meeting.
Okay. I will take a motion to approve expenditures in the amount of two thirty-nine, nine ninety, and fifty-six cents.
This is Money. I saw move.
I have a second.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Floor is yours, Dan.
And it's nothing that's gonna, I haven't had a chance to talk to Tony because things are going on. We're doing a transition. We all know that salesman says it'll go really easy. And of course, it doesn't go really easy, because the salesman gets paid by selling it to you. And there's definitely one I want to ask you about publicly. And I will have it here in a sec. So bear with me. The time clock is one. We redo that every year, right?
Correct.
That was a stall tactic.
I can answer slower.
That was a stall. The lead service. Are we paying for replacement of lead pipes?
We have to, just so. Under state law, we have to replace five percent of our lead service lines per year from the main to sixteen inches, eighteen inches inside the house. So we're actually behind that where we should be as a community in Buchanan. We're supposed to do them all over twenty years. So when we are having services go bad, that are galvanized or led, we're replacing those at that time. That is a requirement the state of Michigan ought to community. So we are required by law to do that.
But it's from the main to the house, or it's not in the house?
From the main to eighteen inches inside the house.
Okay, that's it.
Yep.
All right. Well, that was the only clarification I wanted to make.
Yeah, this is, this is a result of the.
Yeah.
This is all, this is a slant. This is a part of gift. That's why I'm.
Great Republican governor.
Any other questions on expenditures?
Tom by Portison, that's right.
Roll call, please.
Swem.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
And Bianski.
Yes.
Okay. Communications. This one's me, it looks like. So we have the first public hearing of the short-term rental ordinance that will take place at the next regular meeting on July twenty-eighth, starting at seven P. M. Short sweep. Okay. Public comment, non-agenda items only, please. Three-minute limit.
Herbert Brannett, Chief Police, this is just a reminder invitation for National Night Out that is coming on the first Tuesday in August this year, is on this fifth, six to nine, at by Cindy's Elementary Park. We are putting things together to ensure that we, as a community, can gather, not only with law enforcement, but everybody in the community gathering, kind of be good, kind of community picnic and things of that nature to kind of bond together, but have fun, so.
Hello. Name's Mindy Hill. Do I need to spell it for the record? No, people.
Good.
Reaching out, because I'm a citizen of Buchanan. We've lived here for two years. I'm a single parent. We've had a lot of issues with our apartment. Tony and I have talked about that. We'll talk about that after the meeting. The reason I'm here, though, is because it was my daughter and I who were accosted on the streets on Tuesday. We were followed to the post office. I don't know if you've seen the public post that I made. The person that was responsible for the vehicle has reached out to me privately and threatened me and admitted that the tag was unregistered. The police have been unable to tie any information to that out-of-state tag. I have been told that there's nothing she can do. The officer told me there's nothing she can do if he's out of state unless Indiana calls her back. I'm not accepting that. Also, I asked for surveillance to be pulled. She told me that due to construction, none of our surveillance cameras are working for the city downtown. That is unacceptable. I understand that the man wasn't able to grab us and touch us due to my quick thinking and actions and my daughter being alert. However, this should still be investigated. This person, these persons, because there's two involved. There's a woman that provided the vehicle with an unregistered, unidentifiable tag that can't be linked. If somebody would have gotten my daughter, we wouldn't have been able to find them, because there's no information to that tag. And I'm just supposed to sit back and have this officer bag it, talk to me like I'm trash, because I ask questions? Unacceptable. That is why I'm here tonight. I don't think I overreact. I have come through a lot. We've been through a lot in our lives. When I am around the police, they do make me shake. They do make me uncomfortable, because some of my earliest memories are of my dad fighting with the police. He was a very abusive man. And so I don't appreciate being treated less than by the officer who should be helping us. And that is what I have to say about that tonight. I was hoping that Mayor Whedon would be here. I wrote a detailed account and sent it to him. It needs to be addressed properly. These are all of our children that are out here. If I wouldn't have been with her, what would have happened? Thank you.
That's what the cops brought. This answer is being tried. Thank you for this answer. Okay. I live at the corner of Theoda and Charles Court. My neighbors here live next to me on the Theoda Court side. We have been, because a policeman came into the neighborhood and told her that she couldn't park. We were never consulted beforehand. We were never informed beforehand. I called the police department. The woman who answered didn't know what I was talking about, couldn't tell me, couldn't give me an answer. The police never contacted me. I called down here, asked to speak to the city manager, wound up just leaving messages. Nobody got back to me. And we're told, first of all, that section of Theoda Court has been described as being narrow and tiny. It's not. It's open, easily visible. People can park along the side. This is summer. People might have family gatherings planned. In the street like we have, you have a single driveway that maybe, maybe might be able to fit three cars. And if you're a household with two cars, it's gonna make it difficult. We just were informed that we can't park on the lawns anymore. And so we're just told, ah. And and we weren't even told that it was supposedly temporary. Only with the ongoing construction that has lasted for month after month after month, how temporary that is, doesn't look very temporary to people who would like to plan and have guests or who need to park their car out in the street for a little bit while the other person runs an errand or something and comes back in a little while. We have all kinds of need for that little bit of parking that we have. And we were not given enough notification. We were not informed of any details. And we have to live with the decision that was made here. And I don't think you guys took into consideration the people that live on the street. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, do you mind, by disrespect, but I'd normally like to, ma'am, I didn't get your voice on passing along. I was told you were called back on. I apologize if that didn't happen. Before you leave here tonight, let's set some time for you to come in and talk, and we'll make sure to talk to some of your concerns.
Okay. Well, you may have others that we should talk to.
Hi, my name is Anna Sergy. I live on Theoda Court. And I just wanted to say that the street, Theoda Court, is actually not a detour. The detour sign is right at the Theoda Court Street sign. And no cars should take our street as detour, but they do. So it's not really a detour. And Charles Court is halfway closed. We have a barricade. So nobody should, but everybody goes around. And never did we ever have issues with ambulances not going through, fire department not going through. Everybody can, the traffic flows, no accidents, because parks are, we park the cars there. And when officer wanted to ticket me, it was not disclosed that it's temporary. He just pointed to me that there is a no parking sign. And I said, it's just for the corner, because the visual is bad. And he argued that it's not. And I pointed out the three no parking signs in front of three homes. He still won't listen. It was not temporary. And I was not told. And if he would have given me a parking ticket and everybody else, I agree, first we need to be informed. Thank you. As a taxpayer.
Okay. Any other public comment this evening?
Hello. My name is Dr. Ayana Reddy. And I just wanted to introduce myself to the city of Buchanan. I'm in the process of purchasing Stark Elementary School. And I'm going to turn it into a nursing college. So I just wanted to say hello to everyone.
Made my day, ma'am. Are you affiliated over Niles?
Yes, I own.
That's where I've been.
Yes.
Don't you run off before happening this meeting. You just made my day.
All right. City manager comments.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple updates on the construction projects going on around town. Shermer Parkway is scheduled to finish up that punch list items on that, starting this Thursday, we're told, once we have that confirmed. Once we have that confirmed, we'll let the public know. It's probably two to three weeks of there. We're told there's about a four-day period where it's going to have to be shut down to through traffic again. But residents will still be able to get through. Downtown project is proceeding as planned at this point right now. Red Bud is expected to be done to the intersection on mid-August with construction open, are completed, and traffic to downtown open November fifth. So, as long as everything keeps moving, we'll be tracking on that. Few ordinance is coming up for short-term rental, as you've noticed, that's coming up. The last of the two paving projects, Red Bud and River Street, we're waiting for dates from Reed Bryline on those. We're hoping the twenty-fifth. But everything's proceeding as planned.
Thank you, Tony. Commissioner comments. Ms. George?
I just first want to say thank you for bringing those things to our attention. I honestly had no idea about the whole fiasco with that. That's kind of crazy. I think I can vouch for this whole town. Safety is our number one priority. And I hope that we can get something taken care of for you. I also want to say with the, I forget the road called.
Theoda.
Theoda. I always want to call it Theodore, but whatever. Anyway, with the road, Theoda, being closed, I just want to say that I think that we're also, also talking about safety here. I do believe that you should have been let known that this is temporary. And, you know, I know that the comment about it being temporary, but how far is temporary? Because it doesn't seem like it's getting done right now. I know that it's, you know, we're looking at this small picture because it is very inconvenient. It's very, just. It's very inconvenient, but in the long run, we're doing our town and our citizens a favor and like even the generations to come. It's long overdue and frankly, I think everybody here wants to go, wants it to be smooth, but it's just not because it's so old. When we're going deeper, we run into more problems. But I feel like we have a great team here working together and I feel like we all want the best and we're, our goal as a community is the same. And I think we should just try to keep that at the forefront of our mind. So, definitely do understand your frustrations and I appreciate you guys coming up here and speaking up. But hopefully we can also take care of that. I just wanted to say Faith and Family Day is coming up Sunday, August twenty-fourth, two to five P M. There's going to be a petting zoo for the kids, free hot dogs, live music, so many different things, inflatables. Bring your families, bring your friends, your neighbors, and we're going to have a great time. And also another announcement for the National Night Out. That's a great community event also. But I'm excited to see what Buchanan has already accomplished with the, feel like we're moving along. I know it's, seems like it's slow, but I think that we're chugging along and I can't wait to see this side of Buchanan next year because I think it'll be great. Also, thank you to all the team. I think that we, we really do have the best team. And I'm not just saying that. I think that everybody here really cares deeply for Buchanan. And I think that we are very fortunate with our city manager, our commission. I love working with you guys. And our city clerk, the D P W, and I think that is well-deserved, the proclamation. So, Courtney, Rich, all of them, I could never say enough. But, yeah, anyway, sorry for that lengthy, but thank you.
Commissioner Gaskin?
The city manager, for everybody's information, is by far the best city manager the city has ever had. You have to be a little bit patient. If you look out the door, there's twenty million dollars of construction work going on. And every other city manager before you would never have reached out to you and they didn't have twenty million dollars worth of construction going on, plus everything else that's going on. So, I mean, I do understand, we have talked about this for all week, Tony and I, and I know the other commissioners have raised it. There's never a good solution in this, but when you're ripping the roads up, it had to be done, you know, there's going to be a little pain. And I'm sorry. I really am sorry for that. And one thing I did want to ask while I'm up here, how many guys are you getting from Mosaic? Because I thought I seen like five contracts. Are you getting that many phone calls? The first five days, I got five phone calls. People wanted to work. I had one guy show up and do his work. I had one lady call and promise me she was coming. She never showed up. I had one guy say he was coming to do his work, but he couldn't do this and he couldn't do that. And I said, well, you're just going to have to show up and see what you can do and what you can't do. He showed up one day, hasn't been back. I'll dig out the cattle prod. That's, that's, this is typical, just so you know. No, I know. This is exactly. But I think. I just got the emails through my spam and I thought it was a whole string of them. Yeah. So, I wanted to ask you publicly because I'm pretty excited about that. And the other thing I want to say, I don't remember your name, doctor, but you don't know how ecstatic I am about that building. You have no idea. Thank you very much and welcome to Buchanan. I'm done.
Okay, well, I want to say, you know, thanks to Mike, that proclamation, you know, was very well-deserved. But I do, I do have a problem over here with this lady and her daughter. Not a problem, I shouldn't say that. I have a concern because something like that happening, happening in our streets, you know, unlike you, that's not acceptable. And, and I don't know what we can do, you know, but I, I'm quite sure that, you know, we're, we're going to talk to Harvey and see if there's more that we can dig up on this. Because like I said, that's not acceptable on our streets of Buchanan.
I'm willing to share everything I have.
And, and I think, you know, I think we, we need to sit down and do that. I'm not going to say that. Say that. But, yeah, I, that, that is, that is a big concern. You know, I've probably got more longevity than, well, than, there's just a couple of us in here that's longtime residents here. And, you know, we don't need to see that happening. And, and there's probably only been a handful of those kind of cases that I can remember that's ever happened here. So, I'm quite sure that our police department can handle that. I'm, I'm quite sure. Theoda Court, that's, that is a mess. I mean, and I do, I do sympathize, but like Commissioner George said, you know, we're right now in that situation to where, you know, not everybody's adhering to the rules and regulations of driving up and down streets. You know, you got a road closed sign, next thing you know, you got people going down it. I know Randy Store over here, you go down and get ice cream at Chunk's and you may get run over because there's the road closed sign there or no through traffic. People just aren't adhering to, you know, some of the projects because we're all getting a little bit more irritated. And so, that, that's something, you know, that I'm quite sure that our police department is going to address because it's been addressed here. So, hopefully, a little bit more activity can be in that area. And maybe like Commissioner Beyanski said, you know, let's start nailing a few people and, and just, you know, see what we can do. I too always want to thank Tony for all of the work he's done. I have to agree with Dan. It's been a long time since we've had a city manager that came into this community that's cared as much as, as Tony does and, and takes care. And once again, our, our city staff is, is remarkable in what they do. I know we're talking about the phone calls, but, you know, I know, I know they try to get back as quickly as possible. And some things you get pushed under the carpet. I, you know, I guess like we can apologize for that, but hopefully we can get it taken care of.
We weren't even told it was temporary. We were just told it's the law.
And, and, yeah, and.
She was, I wasn't.
Yeah, you know, I mean, and there are oversights and stuff, you know, so.
But nobody should use our street as a detour. It says to follow up from our street, go down, go all the way up. Our street is not a detour street.
Respectfully.
Okay, so.
These are things we can have you guys work with, city manager, McGeeon. I know he has the best interest of you and the community and.
And like I said, go, go ahead. And great work over there. Like I said, I've been in your building a couple of different times for a couple of different programs over there. And that's why I recognize you and that it's going to be great to see one of our buildings being utilized. So, once again, thank you for all of that. And that's all I have.
I'll keep it short tonight. Thank you, thank you to the team. Again, another shout out to Tony. The Ritchies reached out and, and made sure to, to talk about how thankful they were that the city gave, gave the highest form of communication that they've ever seen in, in their time running Red Bud. So, to hear that a new city manager perform at that level with such a large event that does so much for our community, speaks volumes to the work they're putting in, so just wanted everybody to hear, hear that. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I now support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Seven forty-one. Thank you.